Hello. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April twenty first, two thousand twenty five to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance, Charles, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a couple items to add to the agenda. Why don't we have one item, which is a request from the Shelffish Commission for disposal of a old boat trailer. How about we put that in? How about we put that in as three dot two? I know that, yeah, three dot two after minutes. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
Also to add to the agenda, some appointments under section eleven. And there are one, two, three, four, five items there. Marshall Mathis, Asia Lipton, Jeffrey Weber, Arena Cottrell, and Jim Goodrich. Is there a motion to add that as eleven dot four? A second?
A second.
Second, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Anyone wishing to address the board?
Matt, it's it's Gary McAlany. Did you get my message that hoping that we could add an executive session?
Okay, I did not. I haven't looked at. I purposely was not looking at emails upon my return. That's for a little later today. Is there a motion to add an executive session to the meeting? We need to do this. It's got to be the two thirds rule to add an executive session to it, but which should be approved. And this is on land acquisition, Gary?
Correct.
Okay, so it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thanks, Gary. All right, public forum, we're still going once, going twice, hearing none. Let's move on to item three. Approval of minutes, three dot one, the April seventh, two thousand twenty five regular meeting. Is there any motion?
Some.
Second. Second. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. All right, item three, three dot two, which is a request from the Shelffish Commission for disposal of a old boat trailer. Chairman Bob Burgers online. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning.
Want to just give us a little background on this?
Sure. The Shelffish Commission is still using or was still using the same, the original boat and trailer that they purchased in two thousand six. Trailer had become into a pretty bad state just due to wear and tear and rust and, you know, whatever elements. We did purchase a new trailer, which leaves us with the problem of disposing of the old one that typically town equipment goes through the process of if any other town department wants it, and then it would, if not, then it would be auctioned. The trailer was in such bad state that the guys from the DPW Garage really said that it probably was not roadworthy and not safe for use and recommended that it be scrapped. In that sense, we would like to try and give it to somebody who would use it on, you know, on their property. We have a, somebody who has helped the Shelffish Commission in the past. They periodically help us and do work for free. It's a boatyard that, you know, has to move things around within their property. And I'm just asking if that's okay with the selectmen that we just kind of give it away as compared to cutting it up and throwing it into a landfill.
There is no opportunity to trade it in, I assume.
Absolutely not. No. In talking to Alan, the guy from the DPW Garage, he says it's worth a few dollars in scrap metal value, but other than that, it really hasn't, has, has no value at all.
I don't know what the technicalities are. You maybe can spell it in a word now, so I have no problem.
Dollar, ten dollars?
Goodwill part.
Right. Anyone else?
I'm glad with it.
You're good. All right, how about a motion to approve the disposition as described by Bob Burger? Some move. Second, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici coming back in. Good. Lou? Lou, you with us?
I think I got, I got, I had a bandwidth twitch there. I'm assuming we're still on disposing of that or giving it away. I'm in favor.
Great. All right, those in the room.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Bob, congratulations. Thanks.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate the help.
Take care. All right, item four. Finance Director Mary Jane. What up, one? Received monthly report from Finance Director.
Good morning. So we're already through the end of March, seventy-five percent through the year on the revenue side. We are just about where we were last year, ninety, almost ninety-eight percent. All of our revenues are pretty, are doing pretty well. I'm looking at finance. I know I have a large dollar amount, but based on where I am this month, I think we should easily meet that mark for this year. We have a couple of other line items that are slightly less than where we would like them to be right now. For instance, Park and Rec, their busy season is coming up, so we'll be meeting that. Some of our land use are a little bit lower based on how permits are coming in. Otherwise, as I said, doing as well as last year, so we're no real concerns at this point.
Any questions? Fire Department is going to significantly exceed their.
Yes, they already have. And thank you for bringing that up because we'll be discussing them in the next one. So, yes.
Anything further on expenditures?
So on the expenditure side, similarly, we are about almost exactly where we were at this time last year. A lot of our departments that are more than seventy-five percent expended due to timing of payments. Do have an overage in debt, which is my next item on the agenda, as I've told you the last couple of months you will be seeing. Also, capital, those are items that we have approved through the fund balance accounts that will come across at the end of the year. The fire department, you'll see, is at eighty-two percent. They are over in overtime replacements and operating supplies, and all three of those line items correlate to the revenue side. When we have more calls, we use more operating supplies, we have replacements and overtime. So it's not surprising to see. Other than that, I don't have anything to report on expenditures.
Anyone have questions? Hearing none. Anything on warrants or do you want to go right to insurance?
To you. So our medical benefits, oh, sorry, our medical benefits continue to be a concern for us this year. In March, we had one point, almost one point eight million dollars worth of claims, which is significantly higher than our normal monthly budget. We do have also, part of that is our catastrophic claims. We are one point four million dollars covered over the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. That, those catastrophic claims, that expense is also seen in the first column when we're talking about our expenditures, because we pay through, pay through Anthem and we get reimbursed through the stop-loss company. At the bottom, you'll see I have a receivable of just over a million dollars from the stop-loss company. Even with that, at this point, my estimated fund balance at the end of the year is less than three million dollars, which is only two point four months. At the rate we are going, we are, you know, going to see, we, if the rate continues the way it is, we could use up that fund balance at this point, unfortunately.
And we are relying on some of that on balance for next year.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, yes.
Well, we do have, do have reserves elsewhere that we start to talk about.
And the good news about next year, not that's good news, but we, the budget has significantly increased next year because of claims that are happening. So at least next year, hopefully, the contributions at the town and the Board of Ed are making will, will better cover the claims next year. We just have to get through this year and see where we are. So we're really paying close attention to that stop-loss to make, to be sure that we are getting that in.
Okay.
We have no options.
But no, this is.
I mean, there was that one maneuver or factoring or something.
Lasering.
Lasering, yeah. Yeah, we, we, lasering last year, the year before, right Mitch? One year we included the lasering. I've lost, two years ago, I lose track of when we did, but and we, we did that. You know, we, we look at so many different options.
Next year, the trend continues.
Right. Well, as I said, at least our budget, you know, can absorb it next year. This year's budget, unfortunately, is not covering the claims.
Okay. Any other good news?
Monday, yeah.
Okay, four dot two, discuss and take possible action on fiscal year twenty five debt budget transfer.
Yeah.
Second, everybody okay?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, we're good.
Four dot two, perfect. The debt budget transfers, as we do each year through the budget, we use premium credits that were received through bonding to offset the increase in our debt budget. So each year we have that as incorporated within to the budget. Therefore, I request the transfer once all of our debt payments are made to bring that, to bring that in. We did estimate two hundred and fifty-one thousand for this year. I am asking for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty-seven, six ninety-nine going into our premium and nine hundred and twenty-one dollars going into our interest. And that's because we estimate what our interest will be for the first year of our bond. So we were off twenty-one, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. We weren't too bad, but just to make that whole. So that makes those two line items whole for this year.
Great. Is there a motion to transfer, to make the transfer as described by Mary Jane from fund balance committed to future debt to reduction, premium refunding and general occupation for eight one twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And a second. Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room. That motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
See you this evening.
Yes.
Item five, Board of Education, Director of Operations, Facilities, Cliff Ernham, five dot one. Take possible action to contract with Eastern Datacom for the installation of a lockdown system and Intercom for the five ninety-five administrative offices. Cliff, good morning.
Morning, Matt. And good morning, everyone. Sorry about the video. For some reason, it is not coming up this morning, so you'll just get my voice. So this project is part of the five ninety-five renovations. It is the installation of the Intercom, which will allow two-way communication between the front door as well as the rear door, where visitors will enter the building. And it also installs a lockdown similar to what is used throughout the district. It will allow us to tie into the high school, so we'll get notification and coordination with the high school if they have a lockdown event in that building and vice versa, where if we were to have an event here, they would be notified that we are having an event and they could then respond appropriately. The proposals were reviewed by IT because it does intertwine with our IT system and the systems in the building. And it was also looked at and reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. So the Standing Building Committee did make the recommendation to move forward with the award to Eastern Datacom under the Sourcewell and Pepham contracts in the amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you, Cliff. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, okay.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Cliff. So in the event, in the event of, as you described, the lockdown, what, what's the process by which the police are notified of that happening?
It will be similar as to the rest of the schools, so they get multiple notifications. So there's actually a notification that goes out through the fire alarm panel that notifies the dispatch desk, which, the nine-one-one desk, which is the fire department. That goes out as one. Secondly, the Len system puts out a call directly to the PD. So the police department gets a immediate pre-recorded call stating that there's an event at the specified location, which is five ninety-five New England Road. And then, thirdly, we send out pages to police staff directly at the time of notification. So it's a multiple dispatch system.
Yeah, so I don't want to get into those precise details, but thank you for that. So that, Mike, but the point is it's automated, doesn't require someone to stop and think and make a call. Something happens automatically.
Correct, yes, it does.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Look, this is Sandy. When you said here, are you, have you moved into five ninety-five?
Yes, we are. The IT Department, the Facilities Department, and as of last week, the Business Department have moved in. Next month, we hope to remove the balance of the people moving in, which are the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent and everyone out of Lethrop House.
Cliff, it's, it's my general concern. Do you think, this is fifty thousand dollars that wasn't included in the original outfit, outfitting of that building estimate. Do you think there's going to be any more outliers that are going to be required for this building?
Now, again, this is originally thought about, but we wanted to move in and then spend some time coordinating on how the system would work, seeing now that we're on the high school.
I can appreciate the mechanics of it, but I mean, the bottom line is, we knew that it was going to be required and it's fifty thousand dollars that we didn't include in the original estimate of getting this building up to speed. And I just wondered if there are going to be any more items like this.
Nope, nope. Again, it wasn't that it wasn't expected. It was, we didn't bid it out as part of the base contract because it's more of a specialty item than, than the construction itself.
I mean, you know, pretty much required of any public building, especially Board of Ed. It's a, oh, okay, you, you know where I'm going with it.
Yep, yeah, no, there's no other.
Kinds of things were included in the original estimate to outfit this building.
Right. So no, there's no other. We have one more package that we're coming to the Board of Selectmen, and that's the balance of the furniture and fixtures for the Superintendent's offices.
All right, Charlie, thanks once again.
Even the first, I mean, we had to approve the last one, you know, because it was too much. So they split it. Now we got to face the second one. Okay, you know where.
All right, we've got a motion on the table. No, no, we don't have one on the table yet. Is there a motion to approve forty-eight thousand, what's the number one is, forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight for Eastern Datacom for the lockdown and Intercom for five ninety-five. Or his administration offices.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Matt.
In a second.
Second.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Cliff. Item six, Public Works Director, Dave Castro, six dot one. Discuss and take possible action on the purchase of six hundred tons of salt off the state contract. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. Good, good, Jim.
Wonderful, thanks.
So winter's over.
Time to start thinking about next winter.
And we like to fill the shed before, before next winter, obviously for pricing as well as, you know, just to get it closed, so we can close the shed and put the hay bales in front of it and everything else. So we're asking for six hundred tons to fill the shed and that'll be it.
And the price is sixty-four forty a ton. Is that pretty good compared to what we were paying in previous years?
Actually, the, the price, that's, that's my fault. The price is actually sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents a ton.
Okay.
I was, when I went through the files, I was looking at last year's price. So it went up three dollars a ton just in one year. And that's about normal, what it'll do. So.
Okay, so let's figure out a new, a new total price, right? You said it's sixty-seven, what?
Sixty-seven eighty-four.
Okay, by six hundred, right?
You know, forty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars.
In the amount of salt, even with the changes that you've made.
Still the same. And I actually did some research because I had a feeling maybe you'd have some questions for me, so.
Well, I do actually, if we get to that. So Dave, how many years now have you been doing this salt only?
It'll, this is the third year.
And, and your experience has been consistent with your expectation? It's been as, as effective and there's less cleanup?
Much less cleanup. We actually started sweeping two weeks ago and the sweeper operator said there's a lot less on the road now. And we're noticing that. He's finishing roads faster. The catch basin cleanings are down because of the salt. And I went through some of the numbers for the last two years because we started tracking last year with our usage. So last year we had eleven events and we went through fifteen hundred tons. I could, I could break down the events by twenty-four hours or call in.
That's all right.
But this year we had nineteen events.
Yeah.
And with the six hundred tons that we're going to order, we will have gone through seventeen hundred tons. So that's going to put us two hundred more tons, eight more events. So we're actually dialing it in even better. When we start pre-treating our salt, which, which is in the coming years, we will bring that number down even more.
Okay.
The crew is really good about it. They calibrate their trucks every year and they, they actually, they care about it. And they'll ask me at the end of the storm, did I use too much or what did you see from my application rate? And we could do the math and we could look at it. And we make adjustments after every storm if we have to.
Great, okay, sounds good. Numbers are good. Anybody else? Any other questions?
I was going to ask similar, but you got it.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the purchase of six hundred tons of salt off the state contract at a price of sixty-seven eighty-four for a total of forty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars?
Yes, the second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
That motion carries. Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anxious to get up there?
I'm just anticipating.
Item seven, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Goldblatt, seven dot one. Consider and take possible action on the services agreements of Incom Healthcare and Affinity, Inc. to allow IHA, AKA Income Benefits, to become the town to go for its preferred bank partner for health savings accounts effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Mitch, floor is yours.
Thank you. Let me spring you up to date with what you have in front of you. The twenty-three pages that were sent to you is, there's a lot of legal jargon there, but let me take you up to date what we're doing here. Several years ago, we moved pretty much everybody, almost everybody into an HSA or high level health account with an HSA going into it. At that time, we went out and met with some local banks to see, you know, who can give us the best deal for an HSA. Key Bank, we've been with since the time we've initiated the HSA. I won't say things are bad with Key Bank, but I think things can be better. They have forced our employees now to go into the bank to set up their accounts. Previously, we could do it with, through our office by using identification. And it's been moving along okay, but we've been approached by a company called Incom Benefits. And Joe Negrondo is online right now from Incom to answer any questions that I can't. I'm sure there will be some that he'll be able to better answer than I will. And the idea we've got here is Sam and I have met with representatives from Incom a few months ago. We've watched the video. We've spoken to Joe several times. Incom offers, I think, a much better program for our employees. Everything will be online. It'll be on your phone, whichever uses, and with a debit card. That part is all similar. The differences we see that are going to help our employees is that, first of all, a lot of people don't realize exactly what they can and cannot use their HSA dollars for. Yes, you go to the doctor. Yes, you go to the pharmacy. That's the easy part. But HSA dollars or pre-tax dollars can be used for so much more when you go, like just yesterday, I'm at the grocery store and I'm picking up Dayquil or the equivalent. That is an HSA allowable expense. But am I going to figure out how much I spent on that and use the pre-tax dollars? Maybe, maybe not. Most people, probably not. With, what Incom Benefits offers for us, with their card, it automatically will tell what parts of your bill, if you go to CVS, you go to Shopper, you go Big Y, it's going to tell you what parts of your bill are HSA eligible and what parts are not, and therefore be able to use the HSA dollars directly from your account. So that's a huge, huge help, help for our employees. They're a bit more aggressive, I think, than the bank as far as those people that actually don't use their savings up all the time and helping them invest that money, which is still invested at a, at a, actually, it's pre, now, now it's, it's past the pre-tax. There's no tax on, on the investments you make with your HSA dollars. And one of the, one of the things that's going to be most enticing, I think, to our employees is the fact that through the card that Incom will offer us, employees will be offered two percent back as a cash card, as two, two percent back, just like some other credit cards you have, as an incentive to using this. So we're pretty excited about doing this. And I know there'll be some questions and Joe is like here to answer the questions. They call it a new way to HSA. I think it's something that we'd like to take a look at and explore with our employees because Sam and I have done some research on it. We've met with, I've called references to other places they've used. The references have been great. I will say, we will be the first municipality in the state of Connecticut to use them. We could be a leader in this, this field with them. And the other, they will come in, they will come in to meet with our employees, the representatives that are local, they'll come in to meet with our employees to go through this and how it all works. We'll have, we'll have some sessions set up. We'll have online videos, which they've done, which are very good for people to meet with, to see on their own time. They'll attend our, our benefits fair. And the, the contract, the service agreement you have in front of you was first reviewed by Pete Barrett. Pete had several minor concerns, sent them back to Incom. Within several days, we got it back with all the changes that Pete had recommended taken care of. There is no cost to the town. There is no cost to our employees. That part is similar to Key Bank. You want no extra costs, you know, people, the only way our employees get have costs right now are one of three things, which I don't think anyone takes advantage of. One, if you want printed checks, you have to, there's a cost for printed checks. Number two, if you want a printed statement as opposed to your, you know, statement coming to you via email, there's a cost for that. And three, there's a cost if you overrun your account, as most accounts would. We have protections built in for that. So I think most of our employees. Uh, we have protections built in for that. So I think most of our employees, if not all, don't have any costs right now with Keybank. They will not have any costs with Income. And in fact, hopefully some people will actually take advantage of this and get, uh, some cash back, uh, which would help them as well. Uh, Joe, what have I missed?
You did a really good job, Mitch. And, uh, good morning, everyone, and thank you so much, uh, for allowing me to, to be in your meeting. Um, the, the, the big thing here is, and, and I appreciate the due diligence in which, uh, you all went through, um, w- whether it be the, uh, attorney or our, our deep discussions, um, with, uh, Mitch and Sam. Uh, the, you were right on. Two percent cash back is a game changer. We are the first to market, um, in the entire HSA world, if you will, um, in providing two percent cash back. We did, uh, extensive studies on behavioral economics. Um, and when you, uh, incent and reward people for doing something that's going to benefit them, uh, they're gonna keep doing it. And so our big thing is driving utilization and participation. Um, because what that does is it, it drives tax savings for both the employee and the employer. Uh, on every dollar that goes in, seven point six five percent is saved, uh, on payroll taxes, you all, I'm sure know. Uh, so our, uh, our mission is to really drive that participation and utilization. Take it from where it is today and, 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 um, you know, have more people realize the benefit. Um, some of what, um, Mitch said, um, just to elaborate on, uh, when they swipe the card, it knows the difference between the pre-tax and post-tax, but it pays the two percent cash back on all of the items. So here's an example. You're at, uh, Walgreens and you set, uh, you, you put down in your cart, um, your prescription, some sunscreen, um, snacks, shampoo, a number of other items. Um, it allows the card, when you swipe it, it'll know the difference between what those pre and post-tax expenses are. And with one card, you can pay with it all. Not that you're gonna use your HSA dollars to, to, to pay for your shampoo, but you will have a backup account. One of the options is to, um, have a backup account, kinda like a Venmo or a Starbucks card, if you will, for the pre or for the post-tax dollars. And we will pay the two percent cash back on those post-tax items. And it, it's all done. You could see it literally real time on your app. We're a thirty-two-year-old global payments provider that, um, has been in the healthcare, uh, industry for about fifteen years, doing the OTC network for Medicaid and Medicare. So we have incredible technology that allows us to do this, um, this, this great thing with separating the items at the point of sale. So, um, people will never, ever have to worry about, um, being declined. Um, because they're ready to go right there, um, with those post, uh, and pre-tax, uh, items. And we automatically generate the receipts. Um, so because of our SKU level technology, it knows the difference between shampoo and the prescription. And it'll auto-generate those receipts in the app and archive them for the participant. Um, it's, it's cutting-edge technology. It's, it's, it's pretty cool. And, um, it, we, we see it as a way to, um, again, uh, make it easy for participants to interact and utilize, uh, the benefit. Um, Mitch mentioned investments. We are one of the only HSA providers that has first dollar investing. Most, uh, HSA providers have, you have to have a balance, like a, a high balance of a thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know what Keybank has, but, um, most, you have to have a threshold. Our threshold is ten dollars. Um, and so we make it easy for those folks to invest. There's auto-investing, um, within the app. Um, and again, we will educate, uh, and, um, help those folks, uh, understand how it all works. Because quite, quite honestly, it is super easy. Um, it's very clean. The average American misses out on about twenty-five hundred dollars a year on eligible items. There's a hundred and seventy thousand HSA FSA eligible items. And our software knows them all and prompts people, nudges them, reminds them, um, to, to utilize the program. In addition to that, we, um, did more extensive studies and one being travel. Travel expenses are also HSA eligible. So I don't know if you all know, but if you go from your house to the pharmacy, the pharmacy back to your house, even if it's only a couple miles, those miles are HSA eligible and our app tracks it. It reminds the individual. Um, and then God forbid, you have to go further to a specialist. You gotta jump on a plane. You gotta drive, you know, further. Um, it will obviously track those miles, parking, all of that is eligible. Those are dollars that are missed consistently uh, by folks that are not familiar, um, and, and knowledgeable about that. So what, what the system is really doing it all for that individual and that participant. Um, those are basic, uh, the, the basic highlights, um, the two percent cap, the in-app prompts. Uh, our, um, the big thing too is customer service. We have, uh, an implementation specialist that will become the, um, the account manager for the, uh, for the account. So Mitch and Sam, if they have questions from a, uh, administrative perspective, they have one person to go to who's gonna be able to take care of their, um, situation, um, and, and answer and, and such. And then for the participant, if the app doesn't answer all the questions for them, cause it, it, it probably will do ninety-nine point nine percent, but there may be those one-offs, they go right into our, um, our, our folks that, um, are educated and can help them, uh, right there. Our one-call resolution's at like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. Um, so it's, uh, we're really big on rolling the red carpet out, um, when it comes to service. We call it white glove service, um, to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, it's to make sure that a participant never misses a tax-saving opportunity.
Thanks, Joe.
So.
Questions for me or for Joe, actually?
So is Income, are you a merchant processor? Are you a third-party administrator? What are you?
Yeah, so we're a global payments provider that has multiple divisions. One being, uh, Income Healthcare, which created the OTC market for Medicaid and Medicare. And then Income Benefits is an administrator, a benefits administrator. So we have three major layers with our parent company, um, being the global payments provider.
So how are you making your money in this arrangement if there are no fees? Is it as a merchant processor where you're charging the merchant?
Yeah, we have interchange and we make money off of interest. AUM, assets under management.
Huh.
But it's very, very, very low, like, to, for instance, it's like a dollar twenty-five every thousand. So that's, and that's to the participant. It's not to the town. So we make, uh, interest and interchange. And that's why we're able to come to the market with no administration fees. Cause what would happen in a normal scenario is you would, we would still make our interchange and our interest, but we would charge what we call a P E P M, per employee per month fee. And we've waived that for the town, um, because we're really being extremely aggressive, um, with bringing new clients on to experience this new way to HSA.
And if I can ask how, bro, I'm asking, how, how was Income owned?
Income is privately held. Um, uh, Brooks Smith. Brooks Smith, um, started Income thirty-two years ago, um, with, uh, basically the in- invention of the activation of the, uh, the gift card. So if you were to walk into Walmart today, this is how we made our, our billions, if you will. Um, and you see the gift card kiosks, um, all the gift cards in Walmart, that's all powered by Income. Um, and then through that, um, success over the years, um, fifteen years ago, they got into the healthcare space with Medicaid and Medicare. We, we basically created the network for Medicaid and Medicare to swipe for over-the-counter drugs because of our, um, uh, technology. And we own our own technology. So it's not a licensed product. Um, many providers like us, uh, like if you were to do a SWOT analysis of other providers, they have to go and get a license to do what we do. Um, we created it all. We own it all. And, um, that makes us pretty unique in the space.
So Brooks Smith, is that a person? Is that a first name, last name? I don't understand.
It is. Yeah, you can Google Brooks, Brooks Smith.
Good question.
Yeah, um, all right, that's interesting.
So, um, is this like when we're gonna make the change with the, um, four fifty-sevens and the four oh ones? Everybody's gonna have to do it? People in it now and new people coming in?
Cause our intention is to move everybody, I guess. That's a good question for Joe. Joe, we've got, that is obviously all of our current employees with Keybank. We, we have to, uh, move everyone over. I mean, the intention would be do so if someone wanted to stay with Keybank, cause they just don't want the change, uh, with, is there a problem leaving them there?
No, that, not a problem at all. This is a voluntary benefit. This is something that they opt in. After we educate them and show them, um, i- it's totally up to them. Yeah.
Right.
We can, there, there's a couple of different ways too in terms of, uh, how they would like to move things over. Uh, and, and in my experience, I've been doing this twenty years. Uh, I could tell you that there's a, 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 a dual, a, a dual approach. A person can say, hey, you know what? This is great. I wanna do it. But you know, I'm gonna leave my current balance at Keybank and plant another money tree with Income. They can do it that way. Um, or they can say, hey, you know what? I love this. I love the investments that you all have. Our investments are curated by Devenir. Um, so they're, they're the top-notch, low, um, cost, um, funds, like your mid-cap, large cap, sm, you know, small cap, you, anything that you would see in a, uh, 401K plan, about twenty-five funds. And then for the savvy investor, they can open up a free, uh, Charles Schwab brokerage account. So they, they might see, uh, some advantages there for the savvy investor, for those that are really, um, astute. Um, for those that are not, that's where the basic, uh, fun menu comes and then you pick, I want twenty percent in here, twenty percent in there. Um, so those investments, um, they can start fresh, uh, or bring them over. They can do a transfer and we would help with that, uh, as well. There's a form. We would help communicate with Keybank if they wanted to bring those investments over to us. So there's choices for them to make. We guide them through what those choices are and we make it easy, um, to do so.
Our intention is to have this, uh, implemented by July first, so that, um, people would move over their money if they want. And then, uh, the portion that the town contributes to the HSA within, cause we make contributions in early July and early January based on the contracts. Um, those investments, we start with, with Income at that point, July first.
Mitch, I thought you said that we were the first.
The first municipality. Municipality in Connecticut.
First municipality. So they do have municipalities in other states.
They have other, other, Joe, I wanna explain who you, I, I was not able to, I forgot who I called. It was, uh, non-pro.
Yeah, it was a number, it was a number of folks, uh, in the, in the private sector. Um, in, in, you know, we are a relatively new division. We were branded Income Benefits in twenty twenty-four. So in true transparency, we are a, a very first to market with this technology. And, um, you know, Mitch being forward-thinking, um, went through a due diligence process. I wish I could tell you that we had a, uh, we have a ton of municipalities around the country. Um, we're just getting started and you guys are, we're, we're rolling the red carpet out for you folks.
You say literally you have no other municipalities in the United States?
That's correct.
So what, so what we gain is that theoretically, the participants will be able to take advantage of these minute incremental savings from when they buy their Dayquil or when they drive to the pharmacy, if they go through a process involving an app. And, um, I mean, I've been sitting here trying to log into diligent community with the screen all morning. Um, is, but that's basically it. We did, we think we can drill down and people can get a, a little bit more.
We think we can, but it's not, it's not just the, it, it, do they also get a physical card if they wish, Joe?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, you don't have to do it on the app.
Cause right now you have, from Keybank, you have a physical, uh, debit card.
Right.
It'd be, it'd be, you know, if you, you'd be similar, if you, if you're not as savvy with the phone, uh, you just use the card. And you swipe the card and the card would spit out, right, the, 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 uh, receipt would then show.
Right on your app.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. So you'll have a physical card and you'll also have a digital card. Meaning this, that God forbid you forget your card, but you're at the point of sale, oh, I forgot my card, it's in my desk drawer or whatever. You can pull out your phone and, and tap it and it'll work, uh, just like the physical card. So it's all about convenience. It's about driving utilization and participation. And it wouldn't be minute. I would, I would call it over time significant. And we can show, we do have a white paper that I, I shared with you, Mitch. Well, that we did a survey of one of our, uh, larger clients. Um, when they came to us, they had X participation. Um, and after, uh, a twelve-month, um, you know, uh, calendar year, we went back to look at what, what happened. And there was significant increase in participation, utilization, and then of course, tax savings for both the employee and the employer.
But the, the participant issue is not a concern for us because everyone's in it, right?
Everyone's in it, but I think what we were looking at was, um, there has been in certain, certain, uh, groups, a pushback to go back to a PPO plan, which we resisted as, as the town, because we do feel the HSA is, is, uh, more beneficial for the employee and the employer. Uh, but this we feel would give people, you know, we're just trying to enhance the benefits of our, of our employees. And we really feel that, you know, um, this would do exactly that and make people more excited and more convenient, uh, using the HSA and, and actually show people the advantages that some people are, are missing out. They're just like, they look at it and say, oh, I, I, I still wanna go to the doctor and just pay the five dollars. And it just doesn't work that way on the HSA. You've got, you know, you've got a deductible you hit, et cetera, et cetera. But what people are missing out on are some of the other advantages to the HSA, not just that, oh, I've got a deductible when I hit it, et cetera, et cetera. The, the things they're missing out on are the other issues even, I did, I had no idea until Joe educated me about the mileage part of things. Um, that part went over my head long ago. We were implementing the HSA. And this gives people an opportunity to get those other things, plus the cash back, plus have everything. I, I think that what people are missing right now is, is having the itemized, um, receipts and, and showing what their, their, if they ever, if they ever get audited by the IRS, it'd be a, a lot easier than pulling out all these other things. You just tap, tap and it'll just spit, am I right, Joe? It just spits everything out for you, right?
Right, right on, Mitch. Even your tax documents, like your, um, uh, fifty-four ninety-eight and your ten ninety-nine, those tax documents live right in the app. You tap them. You can, um, send yourself an email. So when you're doing taxes at the end of the year and your accountant says, hey, I need your HSA tax forms, no problem. Tap, send, you're done.
I, I have a couple of questions further into some of the things Sandy said. And, and on balance, I, I appreciate Mitch, exactly what you've done. And Joe, thanks for the explanation. I, I wanna get under the cost a tiny bit further too. Because for some people, an HSA is, they don't wanna spend their money when they don't have to. If everything's fine, they want this to accumulate, cause they can then take that and use that as, you know, an early retirement pool of, of healthcare, um, asset, basically, right? And, and, and maybe it doesn't make sense for those folks, if that's what their strategy is, to use small, um, um, you know, annual returns and chip away at the money that's in, in this account. It may or may not make sense for them. Uh, but that's a decision they could make and presumably there would be guidance on that and, and, and they'd, they'd still have the information and ability to make that decision.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, a hundred percent. Uh, if they truly wanna use it as a vehicle to accumulate and invest, uh, it, it's, it's all there for them to do so. And actually, two different ways to invest.
So, and I wanna make sure I understand that, because it is a little bit murky when you, you say some of your revenue is from assets under management. Presumably, you, by virtue of having this pool of money from this, however many people we have in the program, there's some additional earnings that your company can make just by virtue of having that money. And I, but I, but I, but I don't understand is those are earnings that would otherwise go to the participants if they're just sitting in a bank? Like, what, where does your money come from, from that pool of assets?
So Lou, um, just to address it specifically, um, any bank, any investment, any HSA is gonna make money off of assets under management. And, and they're gonna make money off of interchange, meaning moving of the money. So that's just, that, that's just the way everybody makes money. It's just like, Keybank doesn't charge for the per, uh, per participant admin fee. Like, we're not charging, but they're still making money, right? They got, they're, they're, they're not doing it all for free, right? Um, so that comes from the interest on the money that's sitting there. And that's usually based on, you know, the Fed, uh, you know, interest rate. And then whatever, you know, percentage, like ours is a, a dollar twenty-five per thousand. That's our, that's what we make. So it's, it's really low. Uh, it's m- much lower than the industry standard of two twenty-five. Uh, and so that's something that is, uh, based on our economy's scale and based on the, the strength of our. Uh, and so that's something that is uh based on our economy's scale and based on the strength of our organization, how we wanted to go in um and make it very palatable uh for organizations like yours and others to say, wow, this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. So I want to touch on that per participant admin fee. So you're waiving that for our participation. How long will that be waived? Is there a fixed period of time? You're saying, well, listen, for five years, we're not going to charge it? Or every year, we're going to revisit it on an annual basis? And that may kick in? Like, what's the, what's the deal there?
Yeah, right now, um, we have it at, uh, it's either three or five years that we would revisit. But I put a note into the contract into our folks um that in this particular uh situation that we would want to keep it in perpetuity.
Okay, that's our intent. The intent is, um, we have it currently in perpetuity, we'd say with KeyBank. Um, you know, they could change it on us. Uh, it could happen. It hasn't. Uh, we made it very clear to income that when we met with them, everything sounds great. But if it's going to cost the employees anything other than those three outliers that I mentioned, um, we, we were, there was a non-starter.
Yeah.
And, and, and Joe was very gracious in coming back and saying, look, we, we know we want to break into the municipal market and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, work with Guilford and uh we were very aggressive with them, quite frankly. Um, but I think it's, uh, I'm, I'm very excited about this. I think it's going to be exciting to roll out to our employees. I see Mary Jane's got her hand up.
Mitch, you've already asked basically that same question.
Oh.
Sorry. You've already asked basically that same question and you're prepared to tell the employees, look, other than this dollar twenty-five charge per thousand of the money that's sitting there, that's an investment sort of cost that you would be paying no matter where you invest your money.
Right.
Right? You're not going to have any other expenses.
Correct.
That's right. And, and, and I did have extensive um conversations with our leadership about the perpetuity of that arrangement. And uh, everybody is a double thumbs up. I mean, we went so far as to, we're gonna, we're gonna come and uh be a part of your consortium uh or meeting. That's uh, what's that, Mitch, at the end of the month? And, and we would love to, you know, build a relationship of trust um so we can, you know, take uh what we're doing here for you folks um to other municipalities um within Connecticut and around the country. I actually cover uh from Maine to Florida over to the Mississippi. So um, we uh, our big plan is to um, you know, like Mitch said, break into that municipal market and, and tell a great story.
Can we ask, oh, I'm sorry, when, when this arrangement expires, there, there's a reference in the contract to one of the addendums and the dates aren't filled in. So what is the term?
Well, the chart was where we're, we're expecting to be a five-year term as an initial term and then, then like as Joe said, we, we, like all our other contracts, you know, we, we just hopefully be able to just continue without any, any issues. I mean, you know, there, there could have been issues with Key, there could have been issues with other banks that we, we met with too. I mean, you know, but that would be the in, in intent to go forward. Like I said, they've been doing this. Uh, we are the first municipality, yes, but they've been doing this, they said, for fifteen years, like.
Well, you say, have they been doing HSA?
Yeah.
I can appreciate their success in the retail market, but have they been doing HSAs in the private sector?
Joe, you want to answer that? The HSA?
Yeah, we've been doing the HSAs since two thousand and twenty-three. That's when we start doing the HSAs because of the success that we had in the healthcare side. So.
Have you done any other diligence besides sales conversations?
Yeah, I called two of their, two or three of their references that they gave and they were very, they were glowing about how easy it was to convert and how easy it's been to work with them.
I mean, they've been doing HSA for two years now, a year and a half. Okay, and you feel confident as far as the regulatory environment and past clients, you've done some due diligence.
I do, I do.
So we're the first municipality ever in, in the country. So you're rep, the people you called were not a municipality in Maine or something?
No, no, it was, um, I thought, I thought I had with me, I don't. Uh, there was a couple um that I did call. I think one was a health, they might have both been healthcare providers, I think, Joe, I'm not sure.
That's right.
Do, could we solve the issues with KeyBank? I mean, I get if people have to go into the branch to set up an account, that's unacceptable. But other banks don't operate. I'd rather see us stay with the bank. Have we talked about any other banks?
Well, when we, we first set this up, we spoke to, uh, it was, this goes back several years. We spoke to Free, Guilford Savings Bank, we spoke to KeyBank, we spoke to Connects Credit Union. I think those are the three we actually interviewed at the time.
At the time or the cycle?
Oh, no, at the time, at the time.
Which was?
Seven years ago, seven years.
Seven years ago. So you haven't talked to anyone else besides this organization in seven years?
No, because we've had, we've had a good relationship with KeyBank and KeyBank was.
But you just said you didn't.
No, 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 no. I said, we, we've had a good relationship with KeyBank. What has happened, Charles, is two things. One is they've made it a little more difficult for our employees. Nothing that, nothing would cause me to change just because of that, but it has made things a little bit more difficult. In the, and maybe coincidentally, in the meantime, we've been talking to income about their, what they.
But just income or anyone else? That's the point.
I don't know of anybody else that would offer this kind of, this kind of service. No, we did not go to any other banks in the area. No, no. Because the other banks were.
So when we initiated HSAs.
Yep.
You had, that's seven years ago, you had a group of banks or whoever was administering HSAs at that point. This time around, you got a conversation, quote unquote, a sales pitch. And from one person, and we're making a decision based on that one sales pitch?
I, technically, the answer is yes, but the, the issue is the fact that they have presented to us an opportunity that we don't have elsewhere.
And we appreciate that and it sounds, and everything seems okay with it. It's just that Susan's point, no other contracts do we do one shot now. I mean, if you're going to have, listen to this and perhaps make this change based on a, a new way of doing it.
Right.
Why wouldn't you look at a, a group of them that you did the first time through?
Because I don't see any bank giving this kind of service.
Did you ask the question?
I have not asked the question. I've not, I've not heard any, I, I'm familiar, Charles, with other HSA accounts. Okay, that do provide free service, not all of them do. Um, not all, and certainly the only one, the only one that we met with that was willing to provide us the completely free service at the time was KeyBank. There were other charges.
Seven years ago.
Correct.
Things change.
Correct. I have not seen that kind of change in the banking industry that anyone has told me about anything.
But you just told me that you didn't ask.
We, that, that is correct. I didn't, I didn't go out and ask Guilford Savings Bank if they're going to give us a two percent cash back and whether they have an online service.
I mean, you're just.
I'm just saying.
To make this big of a change based on one.
Well, my, my question, my question is where are the banks and why haven't the banks come up with something like this, which provides added value to our employees?
The reason, the two percent cash back though, those employees would be using a different credit card to pay the grocery bill that has the DayQuell on it. Okay, and they're getting their two percent cash back there. So that's not an additional benefit for the employees that I can see.
Well, for those, for those that are getting a two percent cash, not everyone has that kind of card. A lot of people do, admittedly. Not everyone has that kind of card, but this way, I mean, I don't want to do the sales pitch for Joe, I'm just saying, we looked at it as a way that it made it easier for the employees to go to the store and be able to do one-stop shopping, so to speak, and see everything broken out and not miss those opportunities. Also, I am not aware of any other bank in Charles, I did not ask. I'm not aware of any other bank that's allowing people to go day one, make those investments. When we met with KeyBank and, and the others, it was like, when you get to a certain point.
Appreciate that. And the answer to Matt's question of where are the banks, I don't have an answer. I mean, all I know is, you know, when you got something that needs to be sold, you go out and you reach out and you have sales efforts, okay? If you have a product that is, you know, functional and, and good, you don't spend the time, you know, reaching out and sales efforts. The person has to go to them and say, I want a piece of that. And that's my point. And any other bid or situation where the town spends this much money or manages the spending of other people's money.
Right.
You know, we would look at more than one.
But as Joe had mentioned to Sandy's question, no one's going to be forced to move their money from KeyBank. No one's going to be forced to go into this. It becomes an option for now at least. And by us being the pioneer, if you will, we're getting no charges.
I can, I can, you know, accept that, that, you know, scenario, okay? My only struggle with it is, number one, you know, the fact that no other communities have experienced it. So we, you know, I'm not necessarily against being number one, but I certainly want to know, you know, it just sounds a little too retail-y to me, okay? It just, you know, there's a reason that they're doing that. I mean, and I can appreciate where their experiences come from in that market, but that's not the market we represent.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to do the best I can for our employees and I think this is the way.
But you're.
The time setting to solve a problem, has there been an outcry from the employees that they have this problem? There has been, there have been employees that are not thrilled with their HSA. And that, that's true. But you know what? I'm also looking at recruitment, retention. I'm looking at people being more comfortable with their HSA and looking.
Well, nobody gets to be saying they have to have this, but it doesn't exist anywhere else. I mean, that, that's not a.
Right, but why, but why wouldn't we want to be ahead of the curve and say?
I do want to be ahead of the curve, but I just want to make sure what curve we're ahead of. And it's not a, a train coming around the corner.
I think we just need, I, I think that we shouldn't make this decision today and I think that um we may end up with this product. But I, I sort of agree. What if we did find out, and I, I won't use Guilford Savings Bank as an example, what if we did find out that citizens can do exactly what this gentleman is proposing? And it's a, a local Connecticut bank, you know, I, I, maybe not, I mean, maybe not, but I think honestly, we all feel we just have to have answers to that question that way. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, yeah. And, and as an additional step, I think that we as the town of Guilford, as the employer, we can, we should, we should consider maybe sacrificing a little bit of the bells and whistles um to go with something with a more familiar name, a different reputation. If there's a data breach, which could, which could happen anywhere.
Sure.
Would we rather be telling our employees it was a Bank of America data breach or we chose this merchant processor income for our HSA program?
I, I, I appreciate Mitch, what you've done and why you've done it as well. I think it's helpful. This is a big change. I think it would be helpful to digest this over a little bit of time. If Joe mentioned the white paper, it would be helpful to see the details. I, I pulled up their website and, and there's a, there's a whole description on how the FSA works, which I'm a little bit more just personally familiar with, with, you know, our work. Um, but I, 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 I kind of have, be interested in more information, but I kind of think there's value, Mitch, in providing some clarity on these programs, which can get pretty obtuse to people, okay? The, the government comes in, provides a benefit. Most people really don't understand all that they can do or should be doing or might be able to do. And if this program can help with that and if there's no downside cost-wise, I understand why you're thinking this is a helpful thing. There's a couple of ifs in there that I just want to get underneath as well, though. But I'm, I'm not quite as, as the idea of, of changing to a private processor doesn't make me quite as nervous because banks can get, all banks can get a little bit comfortable just handling your money and telling you what you can do with it. And that gets a little frustrating to me at times. Sorry, bank directors on the board there. So, but it's just true. Banks can kind of steamroll people sometimes and that can get a little frustrating. So I want to just be able to compare those two, those two options a little more, a little more thoroughly.
And the other thing that I was going to mention is we, we already are instituting a big change, I think, positive change with this whole switch of the four oh one, four fifty-seven, and that's a little complicated. And to, it's not that you should, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, it's your profession, but I think it's a lot to throw at people all at once too. I, I, you know, maybe, I, I don't know. I, I mean, not that we shouldn't be looking at it, not that we can't improve the services of the HSA, but the, the other one's going to engender some questions and time and, and effort on the town's part, isn't it?
It is.
You know, so, you know, I don't know. I'm just thinking about that too.
The one thing that I would like to add just on, from a uh cybersecurity perspective, we are, you know, SOC two type two, we have the highest level of cybersecurity with tons of insurances. Um, you know, that's not to say no one could ever get hacked like you had mentioned, but uh we do go to the, the highest level in terms of, of what that is because of the money we move, the money that we have um uh between the Medicaid, Medicare, uh OTC network, the global payments provider that we are now being in the consumer-directed benefit space. Um, and that's something I can provide to you all uh from an IT perspective. Just wanted to make sure that you know that we're pretty, we're pretty tight when it comes to the uh, to the cybersecurity.
Joe, could you answer a question for me? Um, your competitors in this marketplace, uh, are they starting to roll out similar benefits uh to the ones that you are, that you've already demonstrated in the industry since, what, two years that you've been doing this kind of stuff? Have you seen anybody try to knock off your process and your benefit slate?
That's a great question and I could tell you this. Um, everybody is, it's a very crowded, ultra-competitive uh space. I've worked for a number of administrators over my twenty-year career. Um, I've actually helped launch startups that are, uh, have, you know, instituting AI. AI is a big piece. Um, we have AI as well. Um, we call it smart tech, technology. That's where the guidance tool comes in. So you're going to see a lot of that. Our competitors are like Health Equity, HSA Bank, um, Optum Bank, uh, Fidelity. Uh, we all know who Fidelity is, the largest mutual fund company in the world. Um, they're all chasing the technology, the advancements, the ease of use. The one thing that um we do that no one does right now here today that hasn't been duplicated is the two percent cash back. Okay, no other HSA refers to market with that. Is that something that could come along and something, no, it is a copycat league, if you will, um, where, where, where folks are going to try to do that? I don't think anybody's going to be able to do that other than maybe a fidelity, um, if they decide to do it. Um, although their HSA is really based on the, the four oh one K business that they have. Um, because we, we study the, the competition quite extensively. So um, that, that's kind of where it sits there today in terms of the automated receipts. That's also something that we're a pioneer uh in, in the marketplace for. Um, and the in-app prompts, uh, that is, um, again, another thing, the travel, uh, tracking travel reimbursement. We saw that that was a big deal um with organizations. Um, and, and that's why we put it into our app. So I, I appreciate the, the due diligence um and the questions. I can provide, you know, uh, more information. The uh, the white paper certainly, uh, Mitch, I, I believe I sent it to you. If not, I'll resend it to you so you have it. Um, I think that would be um good for the board to dive into. Um, but to answer your question, um, no, no one's doing the two percent in the automated receipts right now. And the, the first dollar investing um is also a major differentiator. Most of those, um, you can look at one of the, um, one of the reports that came out, I think, I, I know you all have your computers there, um, was from the uh Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. They wrote a, um, they wrote a, uh, an article um that called out the top uh HSA providers out there for fee gouging um in two thousand and twenty-four. I think it was the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, that said that, you know, the reason why they have the higher thresholds for investing is because they want people to sit in cash, because that's where they make the lion's share of their interest, sitting in cash. Um, where we're saying, hey, we don't, we're, we're not worried about that. We want people to invest. So uh, that's why ten dollars to get in and start investing is, is, is much better than having to reach a thousand bucks or fifteen hundred dollars or whatever those uh thresholds are from a, from one of the legacy providers that are out there. So I, I, I would urge you to look at that uh report. Um, it was something that went, I know there was a lot of uh extensive research from the Consumer um Financial Protection Bureau uh that was written there in, I believe. from the Consumer, um, Financial Protection Bureau, uh, that was written there in, uh, I believe it was the summer of 2024.
Thank you.
For, uh, for our purposes, um, I greatly appreciate the paternal nature of the questions and the posture here. Do you think it's advisable that we actually talk to the people that we are representing? And see what, how they feel about an opportunity like this?
That's it, yes.
So I.
Yes.
I, I think that would probably be rather than us sitting here, you know, the lord of the manor and saying, we know what's best for everybody.
Well, he's got a number of competitors, so I mean, to just listen to one.
Well, again, my, my problem is there's an emerging market here. These guys are, these guys are out front, right? Where are these wonderful institutions that we keep saying we should talk to? Why haven't they come to the table?
Or even his competitors that he listed. I mean, let's talk to them, find out what is going on in the marketplace rather than one.
Well, there's, you push, that puts me in two different directions. One is to go out and just see who else is out there and what they have to offer. The other is to talk to our employees and have our employees listen to Joe. But I don't think, I don't, I mean, am I going to set up a, I mean, if you want, set up a committee of employees then?
Pass the junior representatives if they're heavy pushback on the administration of the HSA at this point in time. I mean, maybe we're chasing a problem that doesn't exist.
Okay.
I, I just, there's one other advantage to the employees that I see, um, with this type of service. Uh, so we talked about going to CVS and I buy my prescriptions and my shampoo and whatever, and it only takes off, um, what is eligible. Right now, I can take my HSA card and go buy a television set if I want to.
It's not, it doesn't track by vendor?
Does not stop me from using my HSA money on anything I want. Now, now, now I'm doing that on purpose. Purposely, I buy a TV, I know I can't. But what about the employees that aren't sure of what is eligible? And they go and they think they're buying their Tylenol, their whatever, and they pay their HSA, and they do this consistently, and then all of a sudden the IRS chooses them, and now half their stuff isn't eligible. A card like this, and I, I, I did HSA in Durham long before you guys did, and this was one of the things I had wanted the cards to do, and they didn't. Because, you know, I, I go to CVS and, you know, I buy my prescriptions first with my HSA card, and then I take everything else to the other counter, you know, just to, but I, I'm not saying go with these people, I'm not saying these people are the best. I've not spoken to them, uh, you know. We should always do our due diligence and we can go out and find others. But I think it's advantageous to our employees to provide a better way for them to manage their HSA card. And I think having something like that is, is, is a direction we should look in, regardless of who might do it. But I think it's got a lot more advantages than we can even think of.
And that's a perfect question during our due diligence, which I don't see that we've done at this point.
And I like the investing after $10.
When we fund the HSAs.
Yeah.
We fund them. Remind me.
So, um, the, each employee has a deductible. That is either $2,000 or $4,000. Our deductible is $2,000 for a single person, $4,000 for a family, and a family is considered two people. So anything more than one is, is a family. So $2,000 deductible for a single person, $4,000 for a family. The town, by each of the contracts, uh, funds 50% of that deductible. And that's split twice a year. So we do a, uh, if you're a single person, a $2,000, we're going to put $500 into your account July 1st. We'll put another $500 into your account January 1st. That money, once, once it leaves the town's coffers, it belongs to the employees. They can leave the next day and take their money with them.
Okay.
Um, but that's, that's how we fund, um, that, that money. And also, um, and that, that is pre-tax to us as well, right? So that, that's an advantage to us also as, as, as a town. And, and when they put their, and when they invest into their, uh, HSA, the money they're putting in is pre-tax as well. And it stays that way as long as you use it properly.
So the issue of not being able to invest until you hit a certain dollar threshold.
That's a bank issue.
Not an issue for us because our employees are at that point as soon as we make our contribution.
No.
No, not.
The investment hits, I want to say it's like $3,000.
I thought it was more than a thousand.
That we have to have, I think it's a $3,000 threshold or something like that. I've looked into it for myself personally. Um, so like I said, that's why it's advantageous to me. But, um, it's, it's a high threshold before we can.
Yeah, it was, it was certainly several thousand. In fact, when we talked about it, it was like, with, and this is, this is recollection from seven years ago, Charles. Um, it was like most of the banks said, after a couple of years, you know, if you don't use your HSA or you over, uh, uh, deposit, there's, there's thresholds, the, the IRS has thresholds about how much you can put in the HSA total. You know, when you've built up over a couple of years, then it makes sense to possibly take 3,000, 5,000, put it in a CD kind of thing. And that was, oh, that's great. And that's also tax-free. What, what Joe is offering is you can start doing that kind of investing, you know, put a certain amount aside right away and, and invest it, so.
I do think if you talk to other providers, they're much lower. I know my personal is a much lower threshold. And the way that we're doing it might solve that whole issue entirely. And also I can't, I couldn't use mine to buy a TV because it, it cuts me off to be based on what kind of.
Right, I guess the bottom line for me is, it, it's a good time for not, for us to now take a, a look again to see if we can, you know, make things even better for our employees by. I, and I think the 2% is an advantage. You know, we quabble over 1%, 2% of deduction in your medical, you know what I mean? If, you know, I have things that come out of my HSA on a regular basis, long-term care insurance. I'll tell you more than you need to know about myself, but you know, it's an eligible expense. You know, I could get 2% back on that than I'm not now. You, you know what I mean? Because I'm not going to use my regular credit card and then reimburse, you know what I mean? So I, I think those are all, maybe it doesn't add up to a lot of dollars, I agree, Sue, but, but it's an advantage that we're not offering right now. So I think we need to look at all the things that maybe we'd like to be better in our HSA and go out there and see if we, you know, who else might be able to provide it, if, if not just, you know, this one particular.
I hate to use that.
Sorry, I.
I mean, it's, that's all, it's, you know, okay, if it's time to examine it and we got a problem that they want us to examine it, let's examine it. That's a jump on board the latest.
I don't think so much that we're going to identify that employees are having problems, but we might identify that we're going to be giving them more of their.
Correct.
Just like with the switch of the 401, 457, which is going to allow that flexibility of how much they can put in, which they don't, I mean, it's a little different way to do it, but at least it's offering something that they don't have now. So I'm all for looking at this and giving you more work.
Thank you. Thank you later.
I know you, I'll pay for it.
All right, well, Joe, thank you very much for, uh, engaging in this conversation with us today. Uh, obviously, we're going to give this a very serious consideration. Um, but, uh, owing to some of the, uh, concerns and the traditional paternal nature uh, relative to our employees and also understanding what's, what's going on in the marketplace, um, we'll, we'll, we'll take a little time. The, the question I have for you Mitch, the likelihood of being able to pull something together in time for a July 1 day.
July 1 rollout is probably going to be next to impossible if I'm the first going to, you know, engage, you know, employees and then look to what else is out there. I don't think it's going to be practical, January 1 maybe. I don't think a July 1 is going to happen at that point. But well, if that's the direction of the board and, and the direction isn't just, the direction simply, no, we're not going to do this. Then I will pack my bags and put this away and tell Joe, thanks, but no thanks. If the direction of the board is, let's explore it, let's see what we can do, let's see what else is out there. Let's see what the employees would like to see, then, then that's all good.
Yeah.
And Mitch, as long as.
A lot for July 1.
Excuse me?
I was just going to say, I agree with Sandy, I think it's a lot for July 1.
Lou, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, so long as, whatever, wherever we end up with this, the employees ultimately have a choice to stay with the bank versus this opportunity, or sorry, Joe, maybe another opportunity. I, I'm, I'm a little more comfortable with that. I think providing people with a choice takes away some of the paternalistic concern that, that, that we've mentioned here. You know, I think it's a good idea to bring people in and get as much buy-in as possible early, but as long as we're not jamming people up with an all or nothing option, I'm, I'm less, I'm less concerned about some of these. Some of the people can then make their own informed decision with some guidance and, you know, I think we get there.
Thank you.
That's a helpful comment. Thank you.
And Joe, I think you're suffering from the fact that you don't have, uh, any municipal accounts currently. I know there has to be a first somewhere, uh, because I think had there been, uh, other municipal accounts and in particular Connecticut-based municipal accounts, the level of inquiry would have been significantly less than you've been subjected to today. So, um, appreciate.
I appreciate that, though, I do, I understand, um, it makes sense. And we're here for you, uh, every step of the way as you go through the process. And I could be an asset in terms of like, I, you know, just off the top of my head, I could tell you all the major players, you can Google them yourself, but, um, been around the, the block, I understand. And, um, I would love to help, uh, if, if you, if you all would like that.
Well, the good thing though is you are now the, well, everything will be compared to.
It's true.
I didn't say that right. Everybody, a benchmark, right? You, you've, you've set a new benchmark, you, it's been seven years that we've looked at it. You know, I think it's time. I think it's a good idea to take a look, see, and we may be back.
Awesome.
Joe, thank you very much. So, uh, we're, um.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mitch, I'll be in touch, take care.
Yep, nice job.
You got it.
So we're not doing anything, we, uh, we, we did consider, but we're opting not to take action this time. We directed Mitch to pull together some more information.
Will do.
Which also includes engagement with, uh, the respective unions.
Will do.
Because it's unions.
It is.
So maybe it's a representative from each of those.
That's what I was thinking, representing different.
I'll reach out to you, I'll reach out to you, so.
And, and by the way, please, uh, take this as, this is a compliment. You've, you've, you've done something that is ostensibly for the benefit of our employees to make it easier and, and, and better to manage their HSA benefits. So, but, you know, at the end of the day, you did, you did a good thing.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, as I said, I, I threw it out there and, and we'll get in this discussion, but, you know, I see that, um, our recruitment and our retention efforts, you know, I'm trying to find ways beyond the contracts, all right, that we can help recruit and retain, uh, the best employees. And if, if there's something that sets us above a little bit here, a little bit there, our benefits there, we have benefits that other communities don't have. Sometimes little things, a discount here, a discount there. Sometimes the little things that people come to appreciate, kind of Guilford as its employer. And that's, that's the goal here for, uh, for us to do that. But thank you.
Okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, item eight. Discuss to take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first election to sign the master municipal agreement for rights-of-way projects with the state Connecticut Department of Transportation. Apparently, our last, uh, agreement, um, expired 2024. Uh, this is pretty pro forma. We've been through it with the council, we've done this before. So is there a motion to authorize the first election? Um, I like talking about myself in the third person. Uh, to, uh, to sign the master municipal agreement for rights-of-way projects with the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Uh, I would think this probably doesn't need any conversations, but, uh, uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
I'm, I'm in favor as proposed.
Thank you. Those in the room.
Aye.
Motion carries, that one's easy. Um, all right, uh, Pete has texted me about adding, potentially adding something to the agenda. Um, I'd like to talk about that at this point. And this is, uh, we have, uh, I think, I think you're aware, we've been working with, uh, outside council on amending the housing ordinance, not housing, but the affordable housing, tax, uh, tax credit, um, tax program. Uh, and Pete indicates that, uh, outside council is, has, uh, something for our review. We'll have it by this Wednesday. Uh, and Pete suggested we might want to, uh, put, put a notice, uh, for the required public hearing. Tracy's not in today. Um, so what I'd like to do is set it for our second meeting, uh, in May, uh, so that we can meet all the requirements for posting, et cetera, and also have a chance for us to, to.
So it'd be starting at 8:30 or 8:15, just at 8:30?
Eight, we'll do it at 8:30, yeah, on May 19th. So is there, uh, first off, is there a motion to add this, uh, item to the agenda as 8.1?
So moved.
In a second, uh, I'm going to try your minds on that. Selectman Federici? Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, all right, is there a motion to set, uh, a public hearing, uh, for our affordable, uh, housing ordinance amendment, uh, for May 19th at 8:00?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici, there's a yes, those in the room?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, thank you all. Uh, says we can't be flexible. Um, item nine, consider to take possible action on a noise variance application for the Guilford Pride event. Um, is there a motion?
I make the motion?
Second.
There you go. Um, just for those who might be watching this at some other point, the event is scheduled for May 17th. This, I think, will be our third annual Pride event. Uh, and, um, I'm thrilled that, uh, we're continuing this, uh, this, this program.
Agreed.
And to those folks in the, who are running the, the Pride, thank you for doing what you're doing. Uh, all right, uh, so, uh, motion and, um, second, right?
Yes.
All right, let me try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Lou, thank you. Right? Um, item 10, discuss to take possible action on a noise variance application for the Guilford Peace Alliance Rally. Is there a motion? I'm a, a second. Here we go, just for those, uh, listening, that the, this event, uh, Peace Alliance Rally, uh, Saturday, May 3rd, uh, 2025, um, from 11 to 12. Uh, I think this is similar to what took place a couple of weeks ago, uh, where it was a significant crowd, so. Um, the question here again, uh, is the right to assemble, peaceful assembly, does that actually fall underneath, uh, our noise ordinances?
Yeah.
I'm not going to ask Pete to answer that question right now, but what I'd like him to do is to take a look at that. Um, do we have the right to regulate noise for a constitutional freedom?
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I felt the noise, noise variance fell more in times of day, like when noise could be before, you know, construction noise before 7:00 AM, crowd noise at night at the fairgrounds.
Well, that's interesting.
So I didn't think we got too involved with noise during the day.
Yeah, but you're right.
So is there a decibel level thing during the day?
Uh, yes, there are.
There are, I went through this when the transformer was put up with the library.
No band or anything?
But I don't, yeah.
Well, okay. But do we approve it?
Yeah. All right, uh, motion in a second. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Yeah, I hear, I, 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 I'm in favor of granting this. It's an interesting point you raise of whether it's even necessary, but, but I'm in favor of the, the caution that they're exhibiting here, uh, by asking.
Right, and, and, and part of this is that this also, uh, has the advantage of working with the police department because they sign up on the, uh, application before we do. So, uh, and this is, I think, just good coordination between, uh, the organizers and, uh, and, and the, and the town itself. Oh, not trying to do something surreptitious, they're, you know, in seeing the full light of day or, right, yeah, exactly.
I mean, there's a, and there's a, there's a right of peaceable assembly, you know, I mean, I mean, there, it's just being thoughtful ahead of time of the way it's likely to play out.
Yep.
Well, I guess the question that comes up is the green, green use, not noise, but green use.
Right.
It's not, it's not being requested.
It's not being requested, so.
They might already have it used there.
That's clear to me. I mean, that, that, that's a public space. If somebody wants to get up and make, make a First Amendment statement, that's literally the place that, where, where it would happen.
Yep.
But you could, I mean, you could say that anything, anything done on the green could be a first, standing up and making a first.
Well.
They do have a requirement for a green. I'm not saying that I think we should put them through that, I'm just.
I, I see a distinction with commercial, commercial requests.
Huh. Maybe. I don't think it's, I, I think it's written about a number of people, that's what it goes, I think.
Yes.
I, yeah, not, not going there.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, did we vote on it? Yes, we did, good. All right, uh, item eleven, appointments and resignations, uh, eleven dot one, act on a recommendation to appoint Candra Houston to the Tree Advisory Board. As a Conservation Commission representative for a term to expire on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six. Is there a motion?
Some move.
In a second.
Second.
Let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Eleven dot two, act on a resignation received from Shirley Gerionne from the Scenic Roads Advisory Committee. I'm gonna make that uh, that recommendation with sincere appreciation. And regret that Shirley is leaving this organization, she was, uh, has made so many outstanding contributions to this community. And this is just another example of where her fingerprints uh, are on uh, so many of the good things that happened in this community, so. I, I would take a second from everyone on that, I think, yeah, all right. Uh, let me try your minds, uh, Sacram Federici.
Aye, yep.
Uh, those in the room? That motion carries. Eleven dot three, act on appointment of Louis Mackel. Uh, the appointments of Louis Mackel, Trish Carter, and Tim Sperry to the Scenic Roads Advisory Committee. Uh, is there a motion?
Some move.
Last second. Uh, let me try your minds, uh, Sacram Federici. Uh, go take those, yes, uh, those in the room.
Did it come through? I was frozen.
I, I think you raised your thumb or something.
We took it as a yes.
Oh, yeah, that's funny.
The absence of a no, it became a yes. Okay, now we have the other one. All right, now we have the uh, the additions, right?
The additions.
Okay, hold on, I have that document somewhere, I just, I put it somewhere, um. Anyway, okay, uh, is there a motion? Let's do, this would be eleven dot four, right? Four, five, six, seven, eight. Eleven dot four, um, and I just appoint Marshall Mathis uh, to the hazard mitigation. President to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second, second. Let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Uh, is there a motion to appoint uh, uh, Nisha, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Lipton, the Shellfish Commission for a term to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty nine.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, item eleven dot six, uh. Is there a motion to appoint Jeffrey Weber to Shellfish Commission, fill a vacancy for a term to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty seven?
Some move.
In a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Sacram Federici?
Aye.
Good. Eleven dot seven, uh, to appoint Arena, Arena Estados Cautro. Uh, to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Some move.
A second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, uh, is there a motion to reappoint Jim Goodrich? To the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty nine. So move.
Second.
Second, all right, let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, we are now, uh, item twelve, request for use of town property. Act on request from the Henry Whiffle State Museum to place signs on the green advertising Make Music Day, uh, June twenty first. Trades Day, June twenty second, Nature Stewart's Field Day, uh, August seventeenth. Welcome Fest, September fourteenth, Making Chocolate Day, I'm gonna note that one. Uh, on, on October nineteenth, and the Fire Lake Festival, uh, twelve, five, twenty five. Um, sign placement two weeks prior to each event. Um, is there a motion?
Some move.
In a second. Uh, let me try your minds, if there are no questions, uh, Sacram Federici, there's that.
Aye, in favor.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Twelve dot two, act on request from the Guilford Arts Center to place signs on the green advertising at Summer Arts Camp Registration. That would be June twenty second through eight, uh, August twenty second, and the Craft Expo, uh, July eighteenth to the twentieth. Sign placements, uh, four, five, through five, nine, and seven, four, through seven, eighteen, uh, respectively. Uh, is there a motion?
Some move.
In a second, now let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Committee reports, um, anything?
Nothing at the moment.
Uh, other than the fact that we have the esteemed chair, uh, from the Affordable Housing Commission, Mary Jo Kessler, we're listening in today. Um, MJ, is there anything you wanna talk about, uh, relative to the Affordable Housing Commission since you're online?
Um, hi, I, I just, can you hear me? I look frozen. Um, I just wanted to let you know that we're um, off to a good start with uh, what we're up to. And on May thirteenth, we're gonna have a public outreach meeting at the community center. And we're gonna have David Fink come again, and we're gonna talk about different types of housing. And uh, at our next commission meeting in May, we're gonna be meeting with David Corus from the CMDA, and we're looking forward to that discussion.
Great. MJ, I was gonna, I'll remind people about the May thirteenth, that the next board of select meeting, but it's an evening meeting, correct, with the David Fink?
It is, it's at seven PM.
Yeah.
On the calendar.
All right, thanks for your support.
Uh, correspondence, anything on the correspondence? Uh, old business? New business? Um, is there uh, any uh, public forum? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion going to executive session for the purposes of discussing land acquisition matters.
Some move.
In a second, uh, we'll keep Gary and Pete, um. Pete, uh, at your leisure. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? Second, uh, let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Yeah, those in the room?
Aye.
All right, uh, during executive session, there were no motions made, no actions were taken, however, as a result of discussion. Is there a motion to uh, authorize engagement of an appraiser for the purposes of appraising a, a piece of property that uh, may have an interest in?
Some move, second.
Second, uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, Sacram Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? That motion carries. Uh, seeing as we've exhausted the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. Uh, non-debatable motion, all in favor?
Aye, well done, everybody.
Thank you, Lou. Are you still in Florida?